Delete, takes up further steps and makes a message when forced it and/or do adjourn and replace it with will adjourn the meeting and may reconvene at appropriate venue. Proposal? Hands proposing it? Do you put your hands up or you're not proposing?
Yes, I am proposing.
Okay, thank you. Call second there. All those in favour? Against? Page twenty-nine, delegation of functions, section eight, delete and park. Uh, no, suppose? All those in favour? Page twenty-nine again, delegation of functions, section B, delete subcommittees and replace the committee. Proposal? And I'm seconded. All those in favour? You unanimous?
We don't know if it's unanimous.
Time to keep up with this.
Oh, sorry, I thought you put your hand up.
Can we get to what?
Taking away subcommittees.
Are you in favour?
Yes, I'm in favour.
Page thirty. Page thirty, delegation of functions, section C, one, insert in the opinion of the Standing Committee its appearance. So that's an insertion. Another proposal? Please propose it. I'll second it. All those in favour? Extension? Page thirty again, this is C four, insert specific. Proposal, please? Well, propose it. I think the second is there. All those in favour?
I can't quite understand that. I know I've got it, I just don't understand it, that's all. What's it, to spend up to five thousand without reference to the council to overcome the initial problems surrounding this specific absence? Who's that five thousand going to, somebody to stand in?
No, no, no. So, so if there's an expenditure, what the clerks are, whoever is obviously, somebody's got the authority to spend that money.
To get somebody else to cover it?
No, just to pay a bill, to pay a bill.
Oh, right.
Sorry, can I make a point of order? That's, it doesn't relate to general council spending. This was, to give you an example, the previous part was unable to work and that power was given so they could employ Malcolm, simple as that. That is the only power it is and that's why we support, well, I support specific. I think perhaps it needs...
That's not the point of order.
No, it is an explanation and we are entitled to give explanation.
Page thirteen, section C six, insert by means of reports to full council.
Nobody voted on that last change.
I believe we have. Can you put your hand up as well?
I don't know, I just lose it.
Put your hand up. Page thirty again, this is section C seven, add, these delegated powers shall also apply to all staff-related issues.
I think that's too broad.
Proposal? Seconded. Those in favour? One, two, you've got the numbers, one, two, three. Those against? Extensions? Calves?
I hope you just then allow the colours.
Four, five, that's not right, five. On the last bit of this, page thirty-three, add thirty-five, this is what we've already, this was resolved before, okay, to add this to standing orders. Don't, I'll propose that. I think the second is there. All those in favour? Six, that's, uh, time. You've got the numbers, please.
Is this the email?
Those, those, against?
I'm, I'm voting against because it doesn't comply with the new laws coming next year.
So I need to propose that you, um, I'm seconded to extend the meeting.
I'll second.
This is, this is the proposal, thirty minutes. So proposal is extend the meeting by thirty minutes, which will take us to nine thirty-one. All those in favour? Unanimous? Very much. Thank you very much. It's quite a complete hard to get through. Right, the next one then is, the generalizing fifteen, welcome to Oakham Town Partnership. Last piece of the lead on this one.
Well, I already made a comment upfront on this. We had a very positive, um, session together. I was, um, quite impressed by the number of traders who were at this meeting. I know from experience at Uppingham, we had difficulty getting the local shopkeepers, et cetera, to, um, to join in. So I think that was a, um, a very positive move. I think, um, and we've got the chairman here tonight, so maybe we can ask him, Blake Chan. I felt that it was a very useful way forward. Um, but maybe in the future we do things together jointly and, um, you know, I, I think they are moving forward. It was interesting to see their agenda and they kindly sent us the minutes after we'd leave their meetings. Um, so I think that's all I would want to say at this championship.
It's okay, I'll do it for you.
Who's next?
Me.
Okay, yours, carry on.
I make an observation here, Chairman. It's not for Oakham Town Partnership to invite somebody, it's for Oakham Town Council to suggest from the council who it should be. Now, I have spoken to two members of Oakham Town Partnership. One said, uh, they invited councillor Haley, uh, before, um, but he said that it would have to come to all council, which is proper and right. And the other one said councillor Haley proposed himself. I don't know which is correct, I have no idea, I am not making any judgement, but that is incorrect in my books, that Oakham Town Partnership suggests it's Oakham Town Council who decide. Sorry.
Could I, could I just clarify, okay, I'll come back to you in a moment, Anne. Just as we do have the chair of Oakham Town Partnership here, could I please ask, I have to clarify?
The process.
The process, yes.
Um, the process is, well, what happened exactly is, as Anne said, that was the, uh, the very clear, uh, assessment of meeting. So, at that informal discussion, uh, it was discussed, talked about that we invited councillor Haley to join our committee. And it, we can, we, it's, we're not, we're not, we don't have the same...
Please, please, let me...
So, at that meeting, it was decided, we, we talked in general council, which is about inviting councillor Haley. After that meeting, we talked specifically about it, uh, and councillor Haley said quite honestly that he would bring it to the council here, but that we are quite within our rights to invite who we want to be on our meeting. So we extended that invitation and then wrote to say that should the town council support councillor Haley as being the, uh, the representative of the town council, on the, on the council which, uh, we would be happy to support and endorse. That was how it happened.
Can I counter, councillor Spickworth?
Well, councillor Lucas has spilled my thunder slightly. However, I am quite shocked. It's fair enough that they can invite you to an informal meeting and that they want to work together with us, they've suddenly upstuck.
Cut, please. New comments to leave.
Well, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of somebody standing at the hangar, that was all, it's pushing me off. Um, and I ask, if nobody else on this council is capable, um, to be able to go to this meeting, to establish clear links of communication and report reporting back to the council. If this Oakham Town Partnership wish to have two gentlemen on their committee without the consent of this council, that's fair enough, but they don't report back to us. If they want to work with us, we have to s- suggest people to be on this, this partnership. And I, I quite don't think it's right at all. And anyway, I'm about to put myself forward, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, the problem came about, um, I can clarify, because this council very kindly appointed me as a representative. Originally, um, the constitution of the town partnership was that two members of this council were appointed. Unfortunately, certain members of Oakham Town Partnership didn't like me, ex-councillors, whatever you want to call them, so they refused me and they changed their constitution. We sent a perfectly able councillor who has perfect connections with practically every parent and resident in this town as a person to be our representative and they were turned down. The town partnership itself, minutes point out that they're basically bankrupt from next year. Um, I, I can only see the relationship that, from what's already been experienced, is that they only come to us when they want money and that's got to stop. Um, you know, nobody even came to this council to get approval to appoint the town centre manager that we have paid hard for this year. So if Mr Haley wants to join a bunch of retired councillors who now has been inflated by business people who tell me they don't even know what the partnership does, and that's his opinion, then Mr Haley should go as a private individual. Because when we do have members and a former councillor is still on there, they didn't report anything to us anyway, so, and that is the issue of a lot of representation from this council, that we, we, we're not really properly represented. And I, and my view is that this is not supported, but if Mr Haley wants to do it in his private capacity, obviously some people in the know at the partnership have agreed he's the most acceptable person. I would disagree with that because I believe he does too much already. Um, you know, that's not an attack, that's just to point out an issue that he does a lot. So I, I would propose at some stage that we don't support this recommendation and he goes off and does it in his own private capacity if they want him. And also, he, you know, sorry.
I'll be very quick, Chairman. Um, I have to really agree with you, Martin and Anne, at the end of the day, yes, the Oakham Town Partnership can invite who they like to come and sit on that and that is correct. And in this case, they've invited yourself and Peter to step in when you can't attend, that's nothing to do with this council.
Absolutely.
We have at the moment, one, two, three, four, five, five vacancies on outside bodies and in my opinion, two vacancies on the Policing Procedures Committee and two vacancies on the OCC building that have never been filled, they've never, they've never come back to council. And if, to fill, if we are being asked to, to fill this post, then we should be looking at all of them again to fill all the vacancies on all outside bodies and working groups.
Yes, I am. Would you prefer to sit down?
No, I'm fine. Um, I find this quite insulting that Oakham Town Partnership say they want to work together, yet Oakham Town Council sent two representatives from this household to work with them and they have refused, one being myself, part of the council, also own a shop in the town, so I know what the town want, yet I'm not good enough for them. Um, and councillor Brooks was the other one. I've worked with the town centre manager who is employed by Oakham Town Partnership, but as a separate thing, because obviously Oakham Town Partnership don't want me, we work closely together, um, on the Armed Forces Day, it was held, puts close, which was well attended, but only one member of Oakham Town Partnership actually turned up. So conclude, to conclude, I do not agree that councillor Haley should become our representative until Oakham Town Partnership can prove they want to work with Oakham Town Council as a whole, not just the chosen few.
Can I ask further that we defer this, uh, because we shall have two new members very shortly, defer this until we get a bigger council than we have at the moment? I propose to defer this.
We have a counter proposal on the table that this agenda item is deferred. Do I have a second of a map? All those in favour? Against? Sorry. Against?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Can I ask, has the chairman, has the chairman been interviewed? Because it is part of their constitution that you go through the interview, that everybody else is put for...
Councillor Brooks, I'm not in a position to discuss what they do. I'm not starting up that organisation as I said, I can't.
No, but I'm just pointing out that their constitution requires the person to be interviewed, not just the form of meeting.
Sorry, I'm done. I thought it, well, you didn't get a chance because it was seconded before. I do apologise, I thought. Alls I'd like to say is, as I heard tonight, um, I'm going to echo a sensible head here that the town council is meant to be building bridges, not just with the Rutland County Council, but the Oakham Town Partnership as well, and I think that we should make that the forefront of the discussion. I do, I am disappointed that they rejected, um, some members at the council, I think, I think that was an oversight on their part, but I do believe that the chairman of that organisation who is here is most sincere in his wishes to work with this council. And I think we should look at the partnership that's being built, the current chairman, and approaching our chairman, and maybe it could be a turning point. I don't think that is an opportunity that we should miss. So whereas I said there, there had been some pleasantness, it had been inappropriate, um, and I think that, you know, some of those people should look to why they're actually on those organisations, I think we should look at what's on the table here. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Do we have any other counter proposals? Counter proposals, which were the counter proposals?
Yeah, my proposal is that we don't appoint you and, um, you get in your private capacity...
So I can't accept that, cannot tell me what I will do in my...
No, no, we just don't accept this recommendation, that's the proposal.
The proposal is that we don't accept the recommendation put forward by Oakham Town Partnership. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it because it's the same thing as...
You can't second the proposal you've made, councillor Brooks.
I was just getting ready to vote because I saw a hand go.
All those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five.
Those against? So that means...
Extension? I've got, I've got five and three, so I'm missing a person. Who voted for? One, two, three, four, five.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five.
That's not, that, Harris. Okay. So that needs to go back to Oakham Town Partnership.
I think it can wait until next year.
She says now that we were proposing that, sorry.
No, you can't, it's not right.
Can't do that.
He needs to come, he needs to come back as a...
Right, okay, then moving on then to the generalizing sixteen.
That's always me.
This is the codicil complaints upheld against councillor Brooks. I think the paper is fairly explanatory. I will, at one point, that we have taken advice throughout from the monitoring officer and that also concerns the draft letter and it was also the monitoring officer's view that there should not be exempt item in that, in that, uh, she felt that electors had a right to know who they may be voting for or not voting for.
Chairman, I just disagree with the monitoring officer and the monitoring officer isn't a member of this council. I don't really care what she or he says, to be fairly honest. This should have been an exempt paper and I'm going to tell you why, because an item on this agenda concerning yourself has been stuck as an exempt. Previous meeting when we dealt with the grievance on this council has been stuck as an exempt because people are named. This should have been exempt. This man is entitled to the same privileges as you and anybody else on this council. This should have been an exempt paper. The monitoring officer does not run this council, she only gives us advice, the same as Malcolm only gives us advice.
Poor advice.
They're not necessary.
This should have been an exempt and I think they should all be exempt. We seem to only use exemptions as and when it pleases us and I think it's wrong.
I'll respond to that. All this information is on the Rutland County, apart from the letter, the draft letter, everything else is already on the Rutland County Council website, it is in the public domain. It's the councillor's name, it is all there, therefore to make it exempt would suggest a bit mockery.
Well, I'm going to come, I'm going to come back, I know you're going to shout me out, but I'm going to get it out anyway, then the letter should have been exempt because this is a letter from this council, personal letter to a member of this council. That letter should not be in the public domain, that letter should have been exempt and I take exception to that. I will accept, yes, that the rest of it may be on the website or on, on, where it's on the public domain, I still don't think it should have been and that letter definitely should have been exempt.
That's, that's your view. Thank you. Do we have anything, councillor Brooks?
Yes, um, I didn't fight for this to be exempt because nobody would have took any notice of me, but some of it's been exempt in the past, this, but what I would like now is to say my point on this. Um, if this council is going to, um, do, I haven't, I've only just seen on my document the letter, but I noticed you're not going substantially, so you obviously took notice. What was put in the council window last year was appalling. I cannot...
We will talk about it.
Excuse me, I'm talking about this item. Yeah, but this is relevant to last year because all this about disrespect to the clerk are allegations that were made over a year ago. The council put this as an agenda item in the public domain with my name on it, that's not allowed, it should just have said a conduct matter, but this attitude towards me has to stop because anything to do with me, the council wants to lynch me. I'm not perfect, but this relates to conduct over a year ago. So I had no objection to the council sharing what is on Rutland County Council's website in full. It doesn't have to go in the notice board, if they want to duplicate what's on Rutland County Council's website, who I have to fight to get things removed, as councillor Ian pointed out, there is such a thing as natural justice, I had to go to the ombudsman to have the last report removed. Now, if the council want to put it on the website, they put the full reports, which actually show that the majority of the conduct complaints were not upheld. This is getting too personal because obviously a member of staff is upset with me, still one year on since she disrespected me. It is unacceptable to, to be in that position now. But that's the truth of it, I was disrespected and I published a video of the clerk apologising to me and I'm accused of being disrespectful for pointing out that a member of staff over a year ago was disrespectful to me. And then the council wants to sit here and bring it out into the public and basically continue this nonsense.
I'm going to stop you there, councillor Brooks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very aware that the clerk is there and I apologise if it's upsetting her, but this upsets me that constantly, every time something is brought up, that it's over a year old and it's made to the public, that it's irrelevant, that it's, you know, relevant now, but you don't put the full facts. I want the whole report distributed to the council so they can see when certain councillors have made complaints, they're not upheld. I don't want you to be selective.
I'm not.
So, and I can tell you got advice on this because it's the most comprehensive and proper agenda item on the agenda this evening and we need to get advice on many things in the future.
Yes, just a quick point, um, yeah, the timescale is unfortunate and we have been pushing to get it moved forward, but, um, it seems to, um, be that it runs slowly at Rutland County Council. Then an independent investigator has to be appointed, reports are done, drafts, they're looked at again and, yes, the months go by. I don't like it that it's this long, I would like it that it's much, much quicker, but that is beyond our control. Um, comments have been made about the monitoring officer. Um, well, she is the expert as far as we're concerned in, in Rutland. Okay, people are shaking their head, but, you know, that's where we go. We've also taken other advice and, um, you know, I think that, um, what we're putting here is a reasonable, um, way forward. We've ended up, yeah, well, you're the one who's, uh, breaching the code, it's not us breaching it.
Yes, but if you read the full report, it shows what I can do.
Councillor Brooks, please, do not interrupt.
And we're ended up, we're saying we're trying to get a conciliation.
But then the clerk doesn't like that.
Councillor Brooks, please, don't interrupt.
The clerk, there's...
Councillor Brooks, please.
What's my sentiment, do you recommend?
Councillor Brooks, please, this is, anybody else have some comments?
Can I just say, Chairman, that the letter is actually okay, but I want you to take on board what I said about publishing the reports in full on our website and there's no need to put me in the stocks in the notice board or council windows.
The proposal is that the attached formal letter is issued, but I'll take this in two, two stages. The first one is the attached formal letter is issued by councillor Brooks and the letter together with the issued notice is published on OTC notice boards and websites. Do I have a proposal for that? Seconded? I'll second that. All those in favour?
Do I just have to go in and address focus?
Because they like to make a mockery of me. Can we not put it in the car window like you did last year with all the crossing nets?
Councillor Brooks, please.
Sorry, councillor Lucas, but I'm getting quite cross.
Because that, because it's, that is our, because that's where we publish our information, our notice.
So it's supposed to go on the website anyway.
Not everybody looks at the website, do they?
No, they don't, how many times have I said that?
The answer is that, in our notice boards, with our website or our media boards.
If you want to put it in those, if you get a time limit.
For distributing information... The answer is that our notice board, with our website or our media
If you want to put it in
For distributing information. Actually, I'm talking.
Well, I'm making a request that there's a time
So the, do you wish to make a counter-proposal?
Well, I'm just asking, can your proposal, can your proposal take into consideration the time limit? Because we don't want it out there for a whole year. Well, I'll say a month.
Well, can you give us your proposal then?
Well, my proposal would be that it doesn't go in the notice board, but it goes on the website. And that it just stays there for a month with the entire reports as it is on Rotherham County Council's website.
You wish to make a
I want to make an observation. It was the same curse expressed by councillor Brooks, the clerk, when he posted his video. And it was requested it was taken off Facebook. At the end of the day, he breached the rules then. He's breaching the rules tonight. And now all of a sudden we're expected to roll over and accept because he's been a bit aggravated because our CCA's done a full and full investigation and found that he had breached a code of conduct. I'm sorry, chairman, at the end of the day.
It's only the code of conduct, they're not laws. I haven't broke the law like someone has did with this council. But I'm treating untreated life under pariah.
Councillor Brooks, would you please, do you see?
We've had members of this council break the law and members have gone to the press and said, oh, it's only a tiny mistake. And this is why it appalls me the way you treat me.
Do we have a second up for councillor Brooks's counter-proposal?
I can't even remember what it is, I forget it.
All those in favour of councillor Brooks's counter-proposal?
I can't remember.
It does not go on the web, it goes on the website. All those in favour? Against? Extentions?
One, two, three. That's nine, so you're casting
Casting votes, that falls. The vote was three, four, three against, I'm using the chairman's casting votes. Against, so motion falls.
So it's not going to be published?
No, don't you know that councillor Brooks is proposing
Oh, sorry, thank you, Bob, missed the long nap.
I want to make a proposal, chairman, that we tackle this as per its. I'd say the first proposal is a formal letter is issued to councillor Brooks. Because that letter's going to be issued, because I think councillor Martin will accept the letter. Where it goes after that, at the end of the day, this is becoming a bit silly. So if I'm going by the item, a formal letter should be issued to councillor Brooks.
Second proposal? I'll second that, all those in favour?
Yes.
I probably shouldn't vote.
Those against?
I'm only voting against because I don't agree with the debate should be put in the public in this meeting.
I'm not abstaining because it's silly for me to vote on something that's
The second bit then, that the decision notice is published on the OTC notice boards and websites. Do you have a proposal for that?
We need to say how long for, we can't just say it's public.
Under recommendations together, the second proposal is to get that letter, together with the decision notice, is published on OTC notice boards and websites. Do you have a proposal for that? I'll second that. All those in favour? All those against? Extentions?
One, two, three, four, five.
Two, two, you're casting votes.
I'm casting votes.
That will stand. The next one is the chairman pursues a mechanism for a conciliation process for the consultant, recommended by the monitoring officer for reports of findings to council. Do you have a proposal for that?
Is this just to establish how much it will cost?
It is, we just have to cost and what the process could be, and report that back to council.
That's not, then you need to put that in the proposal, because that's not what it says there. If it includes to report back to council, the costs and implications, then I'll second that.
Do you wish to make that as a counter-proposal?
Yes, I'll make that a counter-proposal, that you explore the conciliation process and establish costs and report it back to council.
All those in favour now?
Yes.
Against? Is that standing, was that extensions?
Shall I, shall we extend that on the half hour? We're not going to get through this. We can go on till eleven.
Don't worry, I'll say till one.
Do you have a second up for that? All those in favour? So we're now up to a second minute past Against? One. Okay, let's move on then, please. The Gen R18 is actually reserved. This is a appendix M, actually reserved for the council. Appendix M, the Gen R18 painting.
Pretty competent, Gen R18.
Sorry, my mistake, we are on Gen R18 item seventeen, my mistake. Seventeen, not eighteen. Statement of accounts. Any comments? Yes, councillor Brooks?
Right, in the past, you've asked us to write to the clerk and ask questions. I did that and I've been ignored. So I've brought them this evening again. I would like to know why Plantscape have been paid nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen pounds twenty when the financial regulations and the audit had required the council to bring any payment over five thousand pounds to council for individual approval. I was told in a rushed way by the clerk, when it was mentioned in a report that a cheque was being raised, that it was in the budget. Mr Haley has said in meetings, just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean the council's approved it. So there is no approval for nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen pounds twenty. I also asked, because I was quite shocked, I know Well, I'm just aware that it's three minutes, if you want me to do them separately, I'm happy to.
Yes, so that the clerk
It was resolved by council to take a contract. If we didn't pay it, it would have been breached our contract. We have the flowers displays, they gave us a discount for the lateness and they bought in contract. We were in contract with them, that had been already resolved by council. If you're suggesting we shouldn't have paid it, then we would have been in breach of our contract.
It was one of the reasons we lost our other clerk, it's because he did exactly the same thing. But the question hasn't been answered, why it didn't come to council, it's the law. It hasn't, it hasn't. There's no minute to show that we approved that amount of money.
Do you have another question on the financial statement of account?
Well, you just ignore what I say, so I will raise this again with the external audit next year.
I will provide you with the minute number, you've already had the information, but I will provide it again for you first thing tomorrow, councillor Brooks.
Right, fine, but it would be much easier if we followed the transparency code. Two hundred and twenty pounds for a Pogee Corporation for ink cartridges. Why are we buying that amount of money of ink cartridges when we've spent an absolute fortune on a singing and dancing photocopier printer? Yeah, I asked the simple question, I don't want to make a big fuss in the meeting, but the simple question is, what are they for? But they're just desktop printers that, you know, you can go to Wilco's and buy cartridges for.
It was for both the, it was for both our desktop printers and spares in the cupboard.
But we shouldn't be using the desktop printers. We bought you a printer that is wifi connected and, you know, this is just extraordinary. It's the most expensive and wasteful way of printing.
If the question's been answered, councillor.
Wicksteed Ledger, one thousand one hundred and eleven pounds and sixty-eight p. What was it for? Was it new equipment, please?
That is for all the, for earlier on, when you mentioned that all the equipment and everything that needs doing, that is for remedial work, that was on the previous, when the chap at Wicksteed goes out and does inspections for all three parks, that is what is on the report and that's the work of Peter.
Okay, but I think these things should be reported to council a bit better. And then we have an income, which is surprising, of one thousand five hundred and eighty-nine pounds from Rutland House Com. Can I have an explanation of what that is? Okay, that's the first time I've ever seen it on there, but never mind, I must admit it before, but that's why I didn't really would have liked an answer outside of council. The other thing is I noticed, because obviously I've put in a request for VAT. We're not charging VAT for anything at the moment. So I'm just finding it a bit difficult to understand how we can be claiming VAT against services and goods that we're providing. I believe looking recently, I'm not an expert, and I would like the council to seek advice from the councillors. But at the weekend, I did spend a long time looking at the councillors' website and Her Majesty's website, and it quite clearly says that you can only claim against those expenditures. Now, we've registered for the community centre, which hasn't been let for two years. And I can hardly see how hanging baskets in the town and things like that can be associated with the expenses for the community centre. And I'm a bit worried that if we get an inspection, that it might be Yeah, that's fine, but I just would like that to be looked at because if we're not charging, which we should be, how can we be claiming money back?
Any other comments on the
I've just got a quick one. I noticed that we paid for the repair of the windows in the OCC building, editor on this on page one. Have we actually tried to see whether the all singing or dancing camera that we were promised would stop all of this? Whether we've actually got anything from it? Can we identify anybody when the windows were broken? Or for that matter, when the player equipment has just recently been damaged? Because it's got, we had it put up there, we got it lumbered on us, and we were promised it would stop all antisocial behaviour.
Yeah, it's just a quick question, because I don't know. The charge master, the electric car point, engineers, what's that?
It's in the Church Street car park, next to the toilets, is a charge, electric car charging point, which we look after.
We have to do that, because the car park's not ours, is it?
No, it's purely the charging of the equipment and the work involved with it. So I had to authorize, give an authorization to come out and then rectify it.
Yeah, can I just ask the clerk something on that? Is it possible, because it was put in a long time ago when it wasn't used much, for this to come back to council? So it can be reviewed because the electricity for the toilets is going up a lot because it's being used. And it's now normal for people to actually pay for the electricity.
So listen to the general
I know, come, come
The clerk take instructions over table there.
No, I'm just asking, I'm not giving instructions, I just asked.
Any other questions? Can I help then? We've finished debating, I think, so can I help? Proposal?
Should be able to ask, did you?
Big proposal? I'll second it, all those in favour? Maybe second it, all those in favour? Against? Extentions? Okay, thank you. We now go on to Gen R18, which reserves banking accounts.
Yes, I think this is fairly self-explanatory. We've done a sort of a forecast, and it's no more than the forecast of expenditure for the remainder of the year. We've shown the general reserve, we've got the miscellaneous income, the potential, and the fifteen eighty-eight we talked about earlier. We've got the earmarked reserves, general parameters for the year. We're asked to note your report, nothing more than that, just to note it.
That's enough information on the item. Now the answer of nineteen, which is reimbursement expenses and Okay, this is to authorize a payment of fifty-eight pounds for a course fee and travelling expenses.
I understand, probably before my time, that this money was earmarked for this purpose. My only thing that I'd like to say is that if we paid for someone to go on a course, or whatever it was called, what is it? A course, yes. And that perhaps a bit of feedback from what that person picked up from the course would be a nice thing to happen. So it's a great pity that we don't know what she learnt on this course and how it's going to be a benefit.
It's part of the course, it's part of the background work with the neighbourhood steering group. The chairman of the neighbourhood steering group will be requesting, sorry, will be requesting opportunity to address council. But that particularly was very specific to the work of the steering group. I'm sure he will explain that when he's given us opportunity.
But I think this person that we paid for should be giving us, even if it's just a written report, should get something back from the money we have put out. That's all. I mean, I don't disagree with the going, so I want to know what benefit it's doing for the local
I will feed that back to the steering group. Feed that back to the next steering group, basically, okay? Councillor Brooks?
Well, obviously, I'm not going to vote for this because you did say it to me and you confirmed that this evening, it was coming out of the person's pocket. But what I would like to know, because obviously the council will probably support it, is what budget it's coming out of? Because we have an appalling low level for training. Is it coming out of the neighbourhood plan budget, which is already overspent?
I believe the neighbourhood plan budget's got some
Well, not according to when you gave us a report, when the surveys were sent out and everything. There was even doubt whether there was enough money at all. And this is where I get an issue, where we're not getting proper reports on these matters. If we had proper reports, we wouldn't have doubts.
We are talking about reimbursement.
Yes, and I want to know where it's coming from. Like I asked previously to where something was coming from, and they just say, we don't know.
It's coming out of the neighbourhood steering group budget.
Right, and then what is the position of that budget at the moment? And because I did also ask for a full budget report tonight. Well, no, if you're going to make an approval for expenditure, we need to know we can afford it. You can't just say that it's not on the agenda. When the councillor asks what is the current situation of the budget?
I've noted the question, and I'll answer it.
Thank you. As I haven't got the answer now, then I can't prove it because I don't know if we can afford it.
Villa, so have we always debated? Yep, okay. Anne's made a proposal.
I was given this money, but I would propose that we pay it, she's gone on the court, but we've had
Your non-voters paid on a second of her? I'll second it. All those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Against? Thank you very much. Gen R18, the general wish to respond or an extraordinary meeting the eighteenth of September to discuss the local plan review and electoral review of Rotherham ward arrangements. Yes, councillor Brooks?
I'm rather disappointed, I know we would have run out of time tonight, but I'm very disappointed that we're just being asked whether we want to discuss such a serious issue. I don't believe between now and then that all members will have time to read the hundred odd page document that they would need to consult for this. I know some members have seen it and have read it. But as other important issues, we seem to let the community down. And the timescale for calling the meeting and literally the closing date for getting our submission in puts an immense pressure on the clerk to get a report drawn up on what we decide. If councillors think that we can have a meeting after reading a hundred page report and then putting suggestions in a way that the clerk can put it in a way that Rotherham County Council will accept, then obviously I would say, yes, go ahead with the meeting. But I think this should have been done months ago, in the same way as the town centre. But I think this should have been done months ago in the same way as the town centre, whose consultation was ignored. It's wrong.
Yes. Does it have to be on the eighteenth of September or, or here we go later maybe give councillors a chance to, the clerk to read any relevant documents? Did you get that in the last meeting as well? Yes.
Yes, I was at a meeting and I understood because it was coming out over the summer months, there would be a bit of latitude. So I think we've got a little bit of extra time, but it needs the clerk to quantify what that might be. Yes, it's a bit eleventh hour, but we're all at fault, you know. It's, it's no good saying, oh, we haven't done it. Yeah, we haven't done it. This plan came out two months ago. I've read it. I gave a response to the chairman. The chairman's looked at it as well. And also the neighbourhood plan have done the response. Their response is more on the basis of the returns. We are, we are, and it's a game, like the town centre improvements. It's a slightly different matter. But, you know, it's no good blaming each other. It's been like for two months. Just if I may Chairman, part two, the electoral review, I don't know whether there's much to say on that. I mean, it's just a matter of fact. They're proposing two extra councillors and it's mainly to, it's sort of putting two in bar with four, it's looking ahead. And we spoke to the leader about this and, you know, it makes sense. You put two there and then the other movements are less. There is a counterargument. Do we need two extra? But it seems that there would be a tremendous amount of change needed to equalise. The various wards in the county. So there we are.
I haven't spoken on the second part. If you could note Chairman when it comes around. I haven't spoken on the, the electoral thing.
Anybody else wish to speak? You wish to speak again on the second point, councillor Brooks?
Um, I agree with what councillor Im just said, but, but I will contradict him on one tip because the, I believe it's the electoral commission. I actually recommended that there isn't an increase that's available in public domain.
No, that's not, not the gender item.
No, but it's just pointing out.
Okay, thank you for that.
But I don't think that we should be having a meeting for that because it's, it, it doesn't really have an effect on us. I'm, I'm just, just saying. So I'm not making any proposal at the moment.
Do we, do we have any, any other comments? No? Okay, then the proposal is, well, it's not a proposal actually. Well, it had been, yes, the proposal is. That we call an extraordinary meeting on the eighteenth of September and this will be after the strawberry committee meeting, the communication. Do I have a proposal for that?
Can we set time?
Eight o'clock.
What's the eighteenth of August?
Do I, do I have a proposal? Proposal? Second up? Second it. I'll, so Sally Anne second it. All those in favour?
One, two, three, four.
I don't see the point because we won't get a response.
Abstentions? Now that's, that's carried four, one, four.
So nobody will read that. Well, I'll be there because I'm, I'm not missing this because people would love that if I did.
We are calling an extraordinary council meeting for eight o'clock on Monday, the eighteenth of September. The clerk will now, will now distribute the papers for that. So we've got the three clear case notice. Obviously.
Chairman, can I ask through you? That, oh, it was all prepared, ready. Can I ask through you that, because I thought Mister Im's comment was slightly unfair to members. Because I attended a meeting, but it wasn't really made clear what the meeting was for. So can we ask that the clerk provides members links to the reports and so they know what to be prepared for, for the meeting? I'm not suggesting she provides the report because it is two hundred pages with the maps and everything. Well, he's just totally ignored me. I'll ask if you could ask the clerk, please. Well, I'm not allowed to speak to the clerk. Yeah, sorry.
Can you, can, let councillor Brooks speak, please?
I felt that it was slightly unfair to say that councillors hadn't taken this on board when they weren't really given the information. So we're moving on. Can the clerk, with the consent of the council, make very clear indication of what members should be looking at? So that we don't get to the meeting and everybody sits there and says, oh, this is the first time I've seen this two hundred page document. Because I don't really like wasting my time. So they've got a clear indication of what to do for the preparation.
Right, generalizing twenty one. So resolved to exclude the present public under section one of the public bodies of municipal meetings, as the sixty as a name do. During consideration of light of twenty two, twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. As a concern contractual and confidential matter.
And now Chairman, I believe that we should be considered as individual because under the laws, for instance. All aspects of co-option must be held in an open and transparent manner. So I would, couldn't vote as a block because there are certain things.
Well, you make this counterproposal.
Yeah, the counterproposal is that we consider each item as they come along to the bits required to be exempt, not as blocks.
Why do I have a second of that proposal? Do I have a second of your proposal? Motion for.
Because it should be listed in the reasons.
Is that what's called clearly, Ross?
No, it's called that we're not being transparent.
Can we please get back some reason? Thank you.
So you know, this is a democratic, so Chairman, this is a democratic country. And we cannot lawfully co-opt members to this council behind closed doors. The local government act clearly states, I'm going to point to order. The local government act clearly states that all aspects of co-option must be held in open and transparent form, council.
Because what the clerk, you wish to speak?
I'm, I'm going to look to speak because we have a new chair of course, because I know we shall undermine the privacy of the house. Although provisions have said with twelve A, you're aware of that. The local government act, not in twenty two. Defines, there's defining information which is classified as exempt. The actual word is. Information related to any individual. Will apply in that case.
So then it should have applied to me.
Please don't interrupt.
And that's repeated on page thirty of the document. Open and accountable local government.
Yes, but have you referred to the transparency code, which actually says that councillors have very limited time? Shouldn't be exempted.
We're not going to get on with this, are we? We're just, you know, that's, that's okay. But the proposal is. That items twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five are exempt. Do I, do I have a proposal for that? Proposal? Sorry.
And, and also Chairman, sorry. Will the clerk get the letter from councillor Jane Woodcock that said that this would never happen again?
Those are saving.
I'm abstaining.
I can't believe that we're exempting the democratic process.
The item.
It's a tall thing.
I wasn't paying attention.
Four?
Four.
Four.
Those are against, those.
Four.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Against? Abstentions? Okay, thank you.
It's thank you Mr. House. It is very good. Now, now we've obviously had a little German, will the clerk go and get the transparency code, please? Because the transparency code clearly states we shouldn't be doing this. It does. It's so, the words there on the government website, I am not wrong Malcolm.
The gender item twenty two, this is a minute's appendix P.